Good evening. It's 6:30 PM and I'd like to call the March 30th meeting of the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education to order. Mr. Burnside, please take the roll call.
Board member Nubia DeVal Wilson?
Here.
Board member Regina Eckert?
Here.
Board member Bill Gifford? Board member Alyssa Malaspina?
Here.
Board member Kawi Telisford?
Here.
Board member Arun Vadlamani?
Yep.
Board member Courtney Wingfield?
Here.
Board president Caitlin Whitleder?
Here.
Thank you.
Please take note that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. A written notice was sent from the office of the secretary of the board at 2:30 PM on January 6, 2023. That said notice was sent via email to Maplewood and South Orange Township clerks and the editors of the news record Star Ledger and The Village Green. Tonight's meeting is a little different. We will start with our usual updates from our business administration and superintendent and then we will begin conducting candidate interviews for the vacant board member position. There are eight incredible community members who have submitted their application and these folks will publicly be interviewed by the board this evening. Please note, as a result of the candidate interviews this evening, we will not be doing our monthly committee report readouts. However, this information has been made accessible to all of you on our website and where applicable, our committee chairs have included their readouts as well. Let's get this meeting started with a beautiful performance from the South Orange Middle School Small String Ensemble. Thank you so much for being here with us. The stage is yours.
Hi, I'm Nora and I play cello for the South Orange Middle School Early Morning Chamber Orchestra. This evening, we have a select group taken from the orchestra here to play you a piece called "Turbulence" by William Owens. We've been working on this piece as part of our study of music written by modern African-American composers. "Turbulence" explores many lively, driving, accented rhythms as long as being a great balance of edgy dissonance and harmony within the piece. We've worked very hard to prepare this piece for you this evening and we hope you enjoy it. It will also be conducted by our very own eighth grader Nate Kramer.
Instruments off. Sorry, Nora. All right. One, two, three.
Let's give it up one more time for the South Orange Middle School Small String Ensemble. Thank you, guys! With that, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session at 6:37 PM to discuss attorney-client matters, personnel, and student matters. The length of the executive session is estimated to be 75 minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business where formal action will be taken. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board member Malaspina. All in favor?
Aye.
The vote appears to be unanimous. We are now adjourning to closed session. Thank you. Thank you, guys!
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up next on the agenda is the student representative update. Noah, please proceed.
I saw on the agenda that the recognitions went before...
Yes, please do the recognition.
Okay, of course, yeah. All right, so for the submitted student and staff recognitions for March 2023, the first one goes to CHS senior Jack Barnett, who has recently accepted into the U.S. Air Force Academy. Congressman Donald M. Payne Jr. presented Jack with his nomination to the academy and said that he knows Jack will be an outstanding addition to the academy. So congratulations to Jack Barnett. So next, we have two more Columbia High School students, Riley Wallsman and Lillian Leto. This year's 27th Annual Student Photography Show saw two Columbia High School students recognized for their artwork. 10th graders Riley Wallsman and Lillian Leto were selected by independent juror Colleen Gutwin O'Neil to receive judges awards at the Pangree Hot Center Gallery in February. Moving on to Lindsay Minor. Congratulations to Lindsay Minor, a senior member of the CHS fencing team, who came in second place for the state of New Jersey in the EPE Division. And it's not in here, but she also recently just committed to temple to fence at the Division One level, so congratulations to Lindsay. Congratulations to CHS student Madison Stevens, who finished second in New Jersey in the shot put event at the NJSIAA Meet of Champions. Moving on to the CHS Jazz Ensemble. The South Orange Performing Arts Center hosted the annual concert of the Columbia High School Jazz Ensemble. It was the culmination of a year-long collaboration between SOPAC and the CHS Band Program, and it was the first time that the CHS Jazz Ensemble had played at SOPAC. Grammy-winning jazz guests John Lee, Freddie Hendrix, Mark Gross, Jackson Jackson, Cara Latham, and Alex Collins visited the band during rehearsals to give a masterclass in coaching the students as they got ready for the performance as part of the collaboration. Partnership was made possible in part by Linda Baird, Director of Community Engagement and Community Engagement Education at SOPAC. So next, moving on to two more Columbia High School students. Congratulations to Sally Shoup, a junior guitarist and member of the CHS Jazz Ensemble at Columbia High School, who successfully auditioned and placed first for the 2023 All-North Jersey High School Region Jazz Ensemble. Special recognition and thanks to Arushi Valdulmani, a junior pianist, who also participated in the auditions. Next, in our final student staff recognition, we have three students at the Delia Bolden School, Patrick Sieglo, a fourth grader, and two fifth graders, Anna Leva Papowski and Zora Hamberlin Guebla from Delia Bolden Elementary School, were selected to have their artwork displayed in Newark for the Essex County Youth Art Month of 2023. So congratulations to this one's board recognitions.
Okay, now we'd like to make a motion to approve the board minutes of the executive session and regular meeting minutes from the February 23rd, 2023 meeting. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Great. So now we will kick it back to student rep Noah Moros to give us the student representative update.
Thank you, and good evening again. So as we roll into April, our academics and extracurricular activities throughout our district are continuing to bloom and carrying from the winter months. I wanted to begin with a quick recognition to our teachers at Columbia High School, currently instructing AP courses and currently preparing their students for our upcoming exams. Saturday marks one month until this year's AP exams begin. Courses that with a high score on their
Courses that with a high score on their corresponding exams yield college credit. These courses and tests are challenging, but as my AP Calculus teacher, Mr. Joseph Lucetta says, "I'm not here to give you an A, I'm here to save you and your parents $5,000." I have multiple teachers, as do others, who are giving up their spring break time to host study sessions for students to achieve higher on these upcoming exams. I want to say thank you to those teachers and ensure that the members of our community and our board as well are aware of just how hard our teachers work in this district, in this section, and beyond. But in the same neighborhood of tireless dedication, I also wanted to highlight and congratulate the cast, crew, faculty advisors, and volunteers of this year's CHS show, Something Rotten. After hours of the cast and crew's hard work, I was lucky enough to see the show both in the in-school preview and the first Saturday it premiered, and I was thoroughly impressed. There's a reason that our shows are regularly being visited by Broadway stars to watch. They're just that good. We had the entire Broadway cast of the actual show of Something Rotten, or a lot of the cast of Something Rotten, actually come and see the show. And if you weren't able to make it out this year, whether that be to scheduling conflicts or that they were nearly sold out every single show, I would highly recommend seeing it next year. And I believe one of the leads is actually here in the audience, too, Scott, if he wants to raise his hand up. Scott did a great job, so. But last month, Vanessa and I also touched on increasing transparency with the student body over frequent code yellows and fire drills in the Columbia High School building. And while I'm happy to say that transparency has increased slightly, the lack of security in our building is still heavily present. We provided details in the past, more in-depth in private meetings rather than public meetings with members of administration and the board. The same issues are still present. We're grateful for the increased transparency, but both Vanessa and I look to continue working with members of this board to stopping security incidents before they happen. And we'd be happy to set up meeting times over the month of April on whatever schedule works for any board member who's willing to have any sort of in-depth long-commercious station, and I know that's been a priority for a lot of members on the board this year. So we look forward to continuing to improve on that aspect. But as our spring months continue to progress, and Vanessa, in my own time on the board, continues to come to a close, we're looking to grow the role that we hold. Over the last few months in this role, we hope to visit as many of our elementary schools in the district as possible, bringing their concerns to this board similar to what we've done with our two middle schools. Our goal is for the next two student reps to step into this role and have an easy transition into representation far beyond the walls of just Columbia High School. And with that, unless we have any questions here at the horseshoe table, that concludes our March 2023 Student Representative Report.
Thank you, Noah. Does the board have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will now turn it over to Mr. Burnside and Dr. Taylor for their respective updates.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening to everyone. And thank you to our student rep for doing a great job, as always. I'm going to forego my update. We have a newsletter coming out tomorrow. We had a Board of School estimate update just a couple of days ago, so I'm going to forego that because I know we have a busy meeting and pass it over to Mr. Burnside for some important updates.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. So I'm going to start with the construction update. The Seth Boydin School continues with the existing fire alarm system adjustments. They're beginning the HVAC Building Management System Computer Owner Training. We are continuing with the basketball court installations with weather pending. We're completing the upper gym HVAC startup, and we're continuing punch list items. At the Tuscan School, we're completing the window metal panel trim pieces that overhang the metal installation on the HVAC units. We're continuing with existing fire alarm adjustments, and we're continuing with the paved playfield area, weather pending. And at Delia Bolden, we're just down to a few punch list items. At Clinton Elementary, the repairs in the auditorium were complete with a, we installed a new carpet there, and it just needs a final cleaning. The HVAC contractor is continuing to do the piping layout in the new area. The electrician working inside the new building on miscellaneous items is ongoing. The masonry contractor completed the exterior CMU block, and the interior classroom CMU partitions are underway. The plumbing contractor is working on water lines and connecting roof drains. The electrical contractor is continuing to work with the masons. And the roofing installation is approximately 90% completed. The roofer is going to return in two weeks to finish the parapets once the brick is completed. At the South Mountain Elementary School, we have electrical finishing with lighting and devices. We're completing the painting. We're completing the ceiling grid, and visual display boards are 95% hung. We're installing, I'm sorry, the bathroom fixtures are completely installed, and we're beginning the courtyard concrete impavers, as well as the exterior entrance signage. At the Annex, work continues on the electrical for lighting and devices. The bathroom fixtures are completed. We're continuing HVAC duct work. The casework is completed. We have the visual display panels completed, and the curtain wall and glazing is completed. At the Underhill Sports Complex, we're just down to some punch list items, and we're connecting the rest of the PA system. And the exciting news is the Milligan paving is going to be completed over spring break. At Marshall and Montrose, our project was awarded at the March 16 board meeting, and the pre-construction meeting was held yesterday. At Columbia High School, our bid advertised on February 27, and bids are due on April 12. And the South Orange Middle School and Maplewood Middle School, the bids were advertised on March 23, and the bids are due April 25. One more update on Maplewood Middle School. For the gym, the second remediation contractor has visited the site and is working on submitting a proposal to us. The HVAC equipment that will need to be demolished in order for the abatement contractor to remove the asbestos ceiling. And just to clarify something that happened at the Board of School Estimate meeting regarding the price gouging in the transportation industry. The cost that we shared at the Board of School Estimate meeting is an estimate of the bid that will go out when the routes are completed. The price used as a result of the bus driver shortage, bus shortage, and the price gouging that was referenced is impacting the estimates. There is no bid yet because the routes are not yet finished, and price gouging is an industry problem right now, unfortunately. Regarding field trips, right now, field trips are happening, and busing for them is separate from courtesy transportation. And actually, the parents are already sharing in the cost. This is why field trips were not mentioned at the Board of School Estimate presentation. Hazardous Routes and Policy 8600. Hazardous routes are and always will be part of Policy 8600. They are to be evaluated regularly, and no matter what the mile mark is for the expansion of courtesy transportation, any child walking on a designated hazardous route will receive transportation. And an update on hazardous transportation, I'm sorry, hazardous route study. The hazardous route study currently is still being performed. The engineer contracted to conduct the study met with the South Orange Police Department yesterday, along with school administration and some FFT committee members. There will be more meetings scheduled in the near future, including with Maplewood Police Department. These meetings will provide more data and insight for the engineer to complete the study. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Burnside? Okay. Please allow me to read the Board President's statement for the record. "The school board meeting is a business meeting in public and not a meeting with the public. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and, in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. After the committee discusses the matter, it is then shared with other board members for consideration. Only then is it placed on the agenda for board discussion and action at a public meeting." "The board will now conduct the interview process for the vacant board member position in accordance with Bylaw 0143. As mentioned earlier in the evening, we have eight incredible community members who have submitted applications for this role. On behalf of the board, I wanted to thank these individuals for volunteering their time, unique skills, and perspectives to serving on our Board of Education. With that being said, I wanted to spell out the process for everyone. The board will ask you to prepare an opening statement, roughly three minutes, and we've selected three questions this evening that we plan to ask all of you. Each candidate will be given 10 minutes in front of the board. We ask that the candidates manage their own time, as the clock will be set to 10 minutes, so that all candidates have equal time with the board. We will ask all candidates to leave the room, and we will call on each of you in alphabetical order by last name to come before the board for your 10-minute interview. We also ask that our candidates act honorably and refrain from watching fellow candidate interviews via our social media platforms. Thank you to all of you, and I will now ask candidate Shauna Anthony Hendry to please take a seat at the podium, and all other candidates, if you could, please leave the room and await your return. Thank you all, and good luck." May I? Thank you so much, Shauna, for joining us. If you could start with your opening statement around why you'd like to serve, that would be great.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Shauna Anthony Hendry. I am seeking to serve on the South Orange Maplewood School District Board because I am of service. I have 17 years in education. I'm currently serving as a Director of Education at a charter school in Jersey City, and so my entire career, as well as my personal life, has been dedicated to serving communities in general, not only in South Orange Maplewood, in the past in Newark, and also in Middlesex County through my sorority. So my overall goal in life is to serve, and I believe that with my experience, as well as my, just my life goals for service will be of use to the board.
Thank you. Hi, Shauna.
Hi.
What is the biggest challenge facing the district today, and how will your service on the board influence how learners face those challenges?
Okay. If I'm understanding the question correctly, what are some of the biggest challenges facing the districts today, and how will I be able to support with those challenges? Being that I'm currently in a school and running actually multiple buildings in my role, one of the current challenges is really rebounding from the pandemic and all of the academic deficits that are taking place at this time. Unfortunately, that's going to be a lot slower of a process than I think any educator would have envisioned. And so knowing that that's something that's challenging districts at this very moment, the goal is to make sure that I'm able to support with, you know, providing suggestions or even having some experience with different curriculum choices or different types of strategies, any types of programming, resources, et cetera, that I might be able to offer to the district to help combat that challenge that districts across the nation are actually facing at this time.
Thank, hi.
Hello.
I have the second question. Is our curriculum instruction meeting the needs of all learners? Please explain.
If I might ask a clarifying question, are you asking currently in South Orange Maplewood School District?
Yes.
Great question. I currently do not know the curriculum that is being offered in South Orange Maplewood School District. Although I'm a resident, and I have been since 2009, my position has me in Jersey City full-time, and so I have not been able to stay abreast of the curriculum and instruction that's taking place in South Orange Maplewood. However, I am dedicated to learning more about it and making sure that I am fully aware of the curriculum and instruction practices in South Orange Maplewood and be able to offer my support.
Thank you.
Hi, Shauna.
Hello.
I've got the third and last question. What skills and perspectives will you bring to the table that will positively help us advance our goals as a district?
Great question. Being a Director of Education, you have to wear many hats, so I believe that being able to really take a look at what's being presented and be able to make judgment calls and decisions based on that information is going to be a skill set that's required to help advance the board and all of the different goals that are being set forth. I do believe that being very unbiased, really kind of looking at everything for what it is and making sure that decisions are being made accordingly, and those are skills that I have to implement daily in my role, and really making sure that what's being done is in the best interest of the students and the community. So I believe that first and foremost, those would be a skill set that I would be able to bring to the board and be able to advance the goals of the district.
You have a question from Student Rep. Moros.
Hi, and thank you for your interest in joining the board. I just had a quick question, and correct me if I'm wrong. I believe you said you were a Director of--
Okay. I, I, sorry, Shauna.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, you've concluded your interview. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it, and we ask that you step outside, and we'll be reconvening after we interview the next seven folks. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
Next person we will be interviewing today is Jeffrey Bennett. I'll make sure. Can we put the 10 minutes back up on the clock? Oh, it's good? Okay, thank you. Jeff, Jeffrey, could you please start with an opening statement on why you want to serve?
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Bennett. I'm a husband, father of three, 16-year resident of South Orange, bicycle explorer, South Mountain trail walker, sometime bocce player, fan of family trips to offbeat places, librarian, K-12 public school grad, and former board member in this district. As a board member from 2012 to 2015, there were certain overarching goals for me that motivated what I did. These, this included, first, closing the opportunity gap and working for marginalized populations. And then, plus, the need to listen to parents and teachers, plus beliefs that we should avoid one-size-fits-all policies, and frankly, that since our school tax rate is a half-point above the state average, that this was an overtaxed community, and we had to be careful with the community's resources. As a board member in 2023, I would continue these objectives, plus incorporate ones such as the need to restore trust after tumultuous three years and mitigating the teen mental health crisis. I was a very hard-working board member who did a lot of research for the board and who never missed a public meeting. I was actively involved in passing the access and equity policy, the GNT strategy, protocols for Teach-N-J, and adopting the Common Core. I supported efforts to hire more African-American teachers and foster culturally competent teaching. I worked for inclusion across dimensions, from allowing homeschool students to participate in sports at CHS to removing heteronormative language in registration forms to special ed. Although I was not successful in overcoming administrative resistance, I'm proud that I was early in recognizing the problems of the readers and writers workshop and said we needed to embrace phonics. When we adopted the Common Core, I argued that we should teach history and science coherently instead of just assigning nonfiction passages on random topics. I was also concerned about the growing demographic imbalance between Boydin and the other elementaries. When I was Chair of Excellence and Equity, we devoted much time to considering what the process of renewing Boydin's magnet should be, or even adopting a district-wide integration plan. Because of our desire to listen and learn before deciding-- Because of our desire to listen and learn before deciding, we organized with a Boydin PTA and all Boydin meeting. When the Boydin community told us that they wanted more resources for Boydin, more money for the PTA, and more promotion, we listened. After the resignation of Brian Osborne, I was part of a superintendent search campaign, which I could talk about more in a different setting. In special ed, I know we need to insist on best practices and good staff, but also provide an adequate budget. We can talk about FAB, CST, INRS for hours, but without sufficient staffing, even perfectly-designed strategies can't be implemented. Hence, I strenuously tried to keep the budget in order to simply be able to pay for the teachers and paraprofessionals kids need, special ed and general ed. On the state level, I became successfully part of the Campaign for a Fair and Rational Distribution of State Aid in New Jersey. I, this is a BOE member, and post-board as Research Director for the Fair Funding Action Committee. And now for 2023. Again, my overarching goals would be what I mentioned above, but there are some discrete policy changes and district goals I believe we can realistically make in the eight months that I have on the board. I see the IIII as a work in progress. Out-of-quit transportation shouldn't be thought of as an entitlement, but as a core part of the integration program. Supporting families in hardship and stress is an integral part of making the integration plan stable, not chipping it away. I also think that there is a lot of misunderstanding about how the IIII works and that the IIII microsite must be updated. Accordingly, I favor changes to Policy 5124 for waitless and hardship transfers. Going forward, and if there's consensus for it, a controlled choice with the same plus or minus 5% seat control we now have would produce the same integration, both less hardship, savings to the district, and even free up early care and after-care spaces. As someone who has personally been through a lot of difficulty and stress with school logistics this year, I think we must change Policy 8600 for hardship cases this year, starting in mid-spring, and I've written and printed a hand-carried resolution to accomplish that, hopefully. In writing district goals, I would argue that we need one around making our transportation network more efficient, including parent transportation contracts as a win-win to save money and help families who would be eligible for a bus but who could rarely use one.
Jeff?
Thank you for your consideration.
Oh, perfect. We just want to make sure you have enough time to answer our questions. So the first question, what is the biggest challenge facing the district today? I think you've mentioned some already, but you could reiterate, how you, how will your service on the board influence how learners face those challenges? Thank you.
The biggest challenges for the district are things like raising student achievement, helping with the teen mental health crisis, but those are policies, those are overarching goals that there's not a discrete policy solution to. Those are policies we've been working to for a very long time, you know, raising student achievement, closing the outcome gap, that's something we've been working at for more than a generation, and that's something we're going to solve, unfortunately, with time and many, many distinct policy changes. There are certain policy changes which I think are, do lend themselves to discrete policy changes, meaning it's in the board's power to change a policy and help things. Transportation will be one of them. You know, we left a lot of kids like kind of out in the cold this year, and a lot of families in hardship and stress, and even kids walking very unsafe routes to school. That is something that the board has in its power to amend. We also have to do this in a budgetary, responsible way. I'll be honest and say, I don't think the $1.8 million estimate that came out for the cost for busing 1.25 to two miles is really accurate. I think that the tax increase should be smaller than that because we have a very inefficient bus network. I also think that we should have an integration plan more like Berkeley's. That would include a hardship transfer process and a waitless transfer process. And I think that there are some newly emergent things, like a board member, Malasmina, mentioned, I think, last month, that there's a GNT audit coming up. That's something I'd like to work on whenever we have the results of that. I think we always need to work on curriculum too, to have like a more coherent structure for content learning in the elementary schools at least.
Thank you, Jeff. That leads into our question very well. Is our curriculum and instruction meeting the needs of all learners? Please explain.
I would say no. Like, we have unevenness in, in, you know, outcomes, so I would say that actually that would indicate that in a way we're not. Seeing this through the lens of my son, who's in fourth grade, like, he learns very, very little science and history, and when he does learn something in science and history, it tends to be very random. You know, like what he learns one week doesn't have anything to do with what he learns like two weeks from now. I would like to have something, you know, a bit more coherent. You know, I'm a fan of like Edie Hirsch, who wrote like, you know, the Core Knowledge Sequence. You know, he says like, you know, we have to build content coherently, step by step, you know, in units that like relate to each other. For the high school level, I think that the high school has, you know, big outcome gaps. Like, you know, you can still tend, you can still tell what level class it is just by looking at it. So we have to do more to support kids so they are ready to take the more advanced classes. That actually starts the way I'm advanced, like at elementary school. I think we should use more phonics in a more serious way than we do. The high schools, like, classes for high achievers, I think, are very strong. Like, we have over 20 AP classes. There are only like a couple I would wish that we would add. Like, I don't think we have AP Economics. I don't think that we have a very good foreign language program. We have less foreign language in the middle school level than any of our peer districts. We have two years of foreign language in the middle schools, and our peer districts have two and a half years or three years, and oftentimes they start foreign language in a more serious way on the elementary level. So to answer your question, in some ways, yes, in some ways, no, but we'll always be kind of tinkering towards making it better.
Thank you. The last question, what skills and perspectives will you bring to the table that will positively help us advance our goals as a district?
Well, I was on the Board of Ed from 2012 to 2015, and when I was on the board, like, the administration and the board were structured differently, so I would see things differently. You know, in my time on the board, we didn't have as many administrators, but we did have an assistant superintendent. So I wouldn't necessarily change things, but I'd see things in a different way. We had a different committee structure. Sometimes we had different names for the same committee. Like, we had, now UFC and I, in my day, was access, it was Excellence and Equity, but we also had a Communications Committee. We did not have the concept of an Executive Board. We had the First and Second Vice President, but there was no concept of an Executive Board, and I've noticed some dissension around like Executive Board membership. I have a lot of institutional knowledge. You know, I've been through like a lot of, I've been through three superintendents, multiple BAs, you know, multiple board attorneys and everything. So I see things from a different, a different perspective, informed by, you know, long involvement with the district. I'm a very, very good researcher, very enthusiastic about it. I think I know state aid better than anyone else who's not an employee of the DOE. If I were on the board, I would work very hard, I would persuade the board to pass a resolution to equalize the local fair share tax rate, because right now it's very uneven. It goes from 0.8% to 2%, and we are on the losing side of that.
Thank you so much, Jeff. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good. Just a reminder, we're going to set the clock for 10 minutes. Okay? So if you could please start with an opening statement on why you'd want to serve, that would be great.
I don't see a clock.
It's coming.
All right, now we're good. If you could please start with your opening statement on why you want to serve, that would be great.
Can we, I'm, I'm sorry, may I ask? I'm having a hard time seeing, can the clock be in a separate window, please? For an accommodation? Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Well, good evening. Thank you for the Board of Education, for having me tonight. So I'm not going to go into great detail about myself. You have information that I submitted, application, but for any board members and for the public to know, I had the opportunity and the honor and privilege to serve in the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education from 2018 to 2021, where I served as First Vice President. During my course and tenure, I had the absolute honor of championing student leaders, being able to uplift student voices, being able to implement inclusive policies such as our LGBT transgender student policy, suicide prevention policy, also uplift our student dating violence policy during my tenure as well, also championed universal pre-K, also championed being able to update and expand our special education department and bring it online, and be able to up-champion and support creating a policy committee as well to help us oversee policy and continued work. During that time, also was on the board to oversee the long-range facility plan, the implementation and the start, and help us get to the beginning parts of our intentional integration initiatives. As a board member, I was always somebody that was collaborative, and as a critical thinker, very much engaged in wanting to do collaboration and building relationships, not just with fellow board members, but our district colleagues and also our student leaders and representatives as well. That was really important for me. During my time on the board, I felt it was really important to be able to bring foundations and bridges in order to better serve our community as a whole and in order to uplift in board service. I feel truly passionate about the fact that our board service on ourselves is that when we are here as a horseshoe, it is not us versus them, it is not one side or another side, but we are a collective unity, we are a collective community of diversified voices that should be at the table but be able to have the same achievement and goal in mind, which is putting our students first. That is my prime director, prime directive and goal in everything that I do. And since I've been rolled off of the board, I've stayed engaged with the Board of Education, our district, sharing resources, information, uplifting student leadership and voices, and in the work that I've done, extended on the board, leaving the mark when I served as First Vice President Essex County School Board Association, and was elected by our Essex County School Board colleagues to serve on the state level, representing SOMSD for the first time on the New Jersey School Board Association. So those types of benchmarks led me to have an additional skill set along with my 20 years of service within the education and education policy community, having experience inside a classroom and school administration, and also in community leadership as well, being able to take those skill sets and add them in addition to our toolbox here as a board member to help us grow again to put students first.
Thank you. Sorry. So, thank you, Shannon, for being here. What is the biggest challenge facing the district today, and how will your service on the board influence how learners face those challenges?
So I think everything's intersectional and everything's interconnected. If our students are hungry, they can't learn. If our students don't feel safe and welcome at school, they can't learn and they don't come to school. If our students don't feel heard and seen, they may fall off the chart and we may lose them in our schools, and it's all tied to student achievement. It's all tied to the climate and culture of our school district and our community, where our students come first. It's all interconnected. If our students don't feel safe and welcome, if our students don't feel as though they are part of our collective community, if they don't feel seen and heard, that they can't find at least one trusted adult that they can count on to help support them, then everything else falls apart. So our number one priority and our biggest priority in a district is our students. They are also our best thing about our district and our community.
Thank you. Is our curriculum and instruction meeting the needs of all learners? Please explain.
Our curriculum instruction, I believe, has increased for the better since we were able to adopt and do a realignment to ensure that all of our curriculum is posted and ready in one place in our, in a data collection. And when that happened, that allowed for greater access of curriculum for, not just for parents and caregivers to be able to know what's happening and see everything online, but for parent, for staff and teachers to be able to better see resources. Does our curriculum need improvement? Yes. Are we on a path to do that? Yes. Do we need to create curriculum that is actually not just meeting the bare minimum benchmarks and making sure it's inclusive? We need to go beyond that and making sure we're building in actual academic support systems and a full circle of care, so that curriculum instruction that we're providing is accessible not just to some students, but every single student.
You kind of touched on this in your intro, but what skills and perspectives will you bring to the table that will positively help us advance our goals as a district?
Sure. So one of the district goals in our district, as a board goal, right, is to continue our NJSBA certification, which is something that, when all of our school board members here, the colleagues, you make sure you take your training and coursework and go above and beyond. And for myself, when I've changed Master Board Member Certification, the only board member that was able to do that, going above and beyond those duties, that would help with that. Additionally, I also have got NJSBA Leadership Certification as well, and my better commitment for that is part of the toolbox. And I bring with that my policy, my background, and the work that I've done on the local, state, and county level, with a clear understanding also what's happening on a larger level in the federal educational landscape, and knowing in those contexts that we've been able to make on the county and state level to bring it back to SOMSD.
Thank you so much, Shannon. Those are all the questions we had prepared, and we really appreciate you coming and interviewing for this role. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Will. How are you?
I'm good. My printer chose a funny day to run out of toner, but here we are still.
Yeah, yes. We're going to put 10 minutes up on the clock and just going to wait for a thumbs up from Keith.
So can I just ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
Before, because I know that there had been an email that it was going to be three minutes for the opening and then 10 minutes of the question-answer. I'm not sure what everyone else has got.
Oh, sorry, we're doing 10 minutes total, so three minutes, up to three minutes of opening remarks and then three questions.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Great.
So, well, we're ready to get started. Okay. So Will, if you could just start with an opening statement on why you want to serve, that would be great.
Great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Will Meyer. I'm respectfully seeking each of your votes for my appointment to the Board of Education. Why should you appoint me? Well, first, I'm the devoted father of two kids in our district. I've got a second grader at South Mountain and a preschooler at Montrose. I'm deeply invested in our community. I currently serve as Vice President of Policy Initiatives for CPAC, and I'm also Co-Chair of Programming on the South Mountain PTA and serve on the PTA's Nominating Committee. I have very relevant professional experience. I've worked for the past two decades advocating for students with special needs. I've spent my entire career speaking with parents about their battles with their child's public schools, parents who had no choice but to pay for a lawyer to fight on their behalf. And here in town, I have conversations week in and week out with parents dealing with similar issues in our schools. But of course, you've all heard my stump speech before. As you know, I ran for a seat on the board just a few months ago, and in that process, I saw firsthand how Board of Ed candidates and perhaps applicants get lumped in with the perceived factions and voting blocs that dominate the narratives around this board. And I think that's unfortunate, and I think the community agrees. So I'm hopeful that your appointment vote tonight is about finding commonality and not perpetuating divisions, because otherwise, I shouldn't be your choice. At various times, I know that I've been in agreement with every single person on this dais, and at times have disagreed with each one of you as well. If I join the board, it's going to be to vote my conscience based solely on how issues are impacting our students and families, and I would hope to align with as many of you as possible in those votes. And my desire is for every discussion, every action, and every dollar spent to be focused on our students, not ourselves, and I would join you in that spirit. I'm also ready to get down to work. As you know, I attend every board meeting, I read every document, I stay till the bitter end. I have a legal eye for detail and the patience to untangle tricky issues. I'm up to speed with everything public the board is working on, and I'm ready to support and oversee the superintendent's work to achieve our annual goals and address our challenges. And to be sure, we have challenges. Our schools are literally falling apart. Our finances are stretched to the bare limits. Our academic achievement scores are not where they should be from elementary all the way up. Our high school urgently needs more help, especially for our Black and Hispanic students, our special education kids, and our English language learners. And we need to fix transportation and figure out how to pay for it. I don't claim to have all the answers, but I have some insights and am ready to put in the time to keep us moving in the right direction. I would be honored to join with each of you. I would be honored to join with each of you to put our heads down and continue the work required to strengthen our district for all our families. Thanks.
Thank you Will. What is the biggest challenge facing the district today and how will your service on the board influence how learners face those challenges?
That's a great question. I think there's, there's big challenges from a few perspectives, right? We have seen our, our finances are so tightly stretched and we have so many priorities, right? We have our long-range infrastructure plan, we're spending a tremendous amount of money fixing our buildings, but we have so much more that needs to be done in deferred maintenance. We have an integration plan that is hugely effective so far, but we do need to provide greater transportation. And as we saw on Tuesday, there's a lot of unanswered questions about how we're going to get that to happen. We need to expand the curricula that we are using to make sure we're using modern techniques to work with our students. Finally, bring back standardized phonics instruction for our students. And we still unfortunately are facing massive issues in our high school with de facto leveling and, and poor rates of achievement among many of our students, as I mentioned before. That's something that we need to provide more support in the high school, but that also is an issue that we need to look down at the lower grades and make sure that we are adequately supporting. So, and finally, obviously, I have a true passion for working with our students with disabilities and their families and we are unfortunately failing many of them. We need to be doing a much better job at collecting data, tracking data to understand the specific pinch points we have and making sure that we have programs in place that are supporting all of our students so that we're sending fewer students out of district, there are fewer families who are unable to get the services they need, even evaluations from our board, and to make sure that all of our students are equally successful. My experience in special education is absolutely going to be relevant in helping to guide us and have an informed conversation with the district on hopefully the special services committee and/or the curriculum instruction to make sure that we are supervising our special services well and keeping a close eye overall on the budget in figuring out and having interesting solutions with the district to figure out how we're going to figure transportation and a number of issues that are, you know, important in the district.
Thank you. You sort of touched on this, but is our curriculum and instruction meeting the needs of all of our learners? Please explain.
All of our learners, it's probably not. I, I think we have a good start. You know, I'm very pleased that in the last couple of years, we've deployed our Atlas online system so that everyone can see the curriculum that is in place. Unfortunately, having that online means that you can go through, you can find the things that aren't in place. There was a recent discussion at CPAC about how much we are providing students with instruction about awareness of special needs. And if you look in our curriculum, at least what's online, there's virtually nothing there. I think that we need to be doing a better job at working at English language instruction for our early grades. I'm happy to see that we are improving our math curriculum and I cannot believe how much money curriculum costs. So I recognize, we can't just go out and pick up a new ELA curriculum, but strengthening our services there would be really important. I'd love to see a more structured use of Orton Gillingham reading instruction, which of course is the gold standard among many in the special education community for working with decoding for early readers. If we were to take that methodology and expand it so that it was generally used by all the teachers in our early grades, I mean, that could provide such rich benefits to all of our students, not just the ones that wind up running the gauntlet and finally receiving special services.
Thank you.
Hi Will.
Hi.
What skills and perspectives will you bring to the table that will positively help us advance our goals as a district?
Well, so, you know, I, I am a lawyer and I apologize to everyone because it's, look, there are, there are skills that I have for sitting down and nitpicking through. You know, I really enjoy, at the 48-hour mark before our meeting, we get all the, the policies released in, in picking through and seeing what is changing, what provisions are in there, what definitions are not quite defined right. I think that attention to detail is an important one. Look, I am not barred in New Jersey and I am not a lawyer for the district for sure, but having that eye toward looking at things and being able to interface well with council and knowing the questions to ask to make sure that we are, you know, following council's advice well and, you know, developing adequate policies, that's one piece. I am someone who likes reaching across the aisle. If, if you look at my text thread, the number of different people in our district that I talk to right now, I, I want to talk to everyone, you know. I, I really want to, to the degree that there are rifts or divides on the board, I really want to be a collaborator because I think that's very important in making sure that in our committees and behind closed doors as well as on the dais, that we are collaborating and working well. I think that is a talent that I have. And listening, I don't need to come into a room with the right answer, but I want to leave with it. And so trying to figure that out. Those are a couple of the skills that I have in addition to substantive knowledge that I have from working from a couple decades in education, speaking with who knows how many teachers, psychologists, administrators. These are skills that I can bring that I think would help strengthen the district as we listen to our district administrators, listen to our teachers, as well as our union, listen to our parents. I spend my entire day, every day, listening to parents. The board is the eyes and ears of the community. As a policymaking body, we are making sure that we have a district that is reflecting our community's needs out of a school system. And you can't do that unless you know how parents are doing. And I'm very privileged to be in positions right now where I'm hearing from a lot of parents and, and some of it is very good, not all of it. So bringing both of those, I think, would be a help.
Thank you so much Will. That's all we have for you today. We really appreciate you coming in to interview for this position. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks to all of you as well.
Next up, we have Shayna Sackett-Gable. Shayna, thank you so much for joining us. We're going to put 10 minutes up on the clock. Just looking at Keith to make sure we're good. Okay. So we'll start with an opening statement from you Shayna. If you could please tell us why you'd want to serve, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm Shayna Sackett-Gable, Maplewood resident, mom of two SOMSD students. Thank you for having me and more importantly, thank you for your service on the Board of Ed. So as you well know, the Board of Education provides oversight to one of the most important and largest operations in our community. And this requires a deep knowledge and deep respect for the community and its stakeholders. And as the ultimate stakeholder, I am seeking to fill the open position on the board. After growing up in South Orange, I returned to the community as a teacher and parent. For 13 years, I worked as a teacher at Seth Boydin Elementary School, demonstrating my commitment to SOMSD students. I presented math nights, mentored new teachers, co-taught inclusion classes, piloted a new math curriculum, wrote curriculum, demonstrated lessons for my colleagues, served on the Seth Boydin Title I Committee and so much more. If appointed to serve on the board, I will bring my pedagogical expertise in STEM in service to Dr. Taylor and of Assistant Superintendent Anne Bodnar curriculum by focusing on policy goals that will strengthen students' learning outcomes in the district. I no longer teach in the community, but I continue to demonstrate my commitment to service. I served on the Seth Boydin PTA as a teacher liaison, bridging the parent and staff communities. While co-president of the SOMS HSA, I supported uplifting our equity and inclusion liaison to a voting member and adding a parent coordinator to represent the voices of guardians of children in the multi-age self-contained classes. Currently, I am co-president of President's Council. I listen intently to the concerns of parents of all SOMSD students at various levels and bring those concerns to the district administration. All the while, I have upheld a healthy respect for district staff so that we can move forward together productively. I believe wholeheartedly that my work and volunteerism in SOMSD qualify me to serve as a member of the school board. I seek this position without any political aspirations. I just bring a voice strengthened by my demonstrated unwavering commitment to our students, who I believe are the heart of our community. I'm excited by the challenge of working together across differences so that we can live up to the promise of our district. And as a resident, parent, educator and volunteer, I value our district's strengths and devoted in would be committed to supporting the board's work as I have supported our students throughout my years of service.
Thank you Shayna. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
What is the biggest challenge facing the district today and how will your service on the board influence how learners face those challenges?
Well, I think one of the biggest challenges in our district's community is that we often are, we all often want the same goal for our students, but how to get there is often a divisive point. Hope you're all okay up there. So, so I think continuing the work that you started doing to strengthen, strengthen academics at the high school, I know that's one of the district's goals and as well as the restorative justice work, K-12, that the district has been doing. I think academic achievement and social, like, social emotional outcomes go hand in hand. And I think the work that you're currently doing support those outcomes.
Thank you. Is our curriculum and instruction meeting the needs of all learners? Please explain.
It's a great question. I mean, I, I know from the presentations that I have seen that Ms. Bodnar has made and currently it, something doesn't seem to be connecting for all of our students because of the disparities in achievement across demographics, across schools and so on. So I think that, like, I know there's a possibility of a new math curriculum in K-5. And I think with my background in that area, I would be able to, you know, provide some input on the strengths and weaknesses of different curricula out there and just support the work that the district is doing.
What skills and perspectives will you bring to the table that will positively help us advance our goals as a district?
Well, when I started thinking of applying for this position, which really hadn't crossed my mind very much, but when I started thinking about it and the more I sort of talked through it in my head, I thought, well, I think I'm a very even-tempered person who can think logically, listen to perspectives, think critically and really intently. And I think that my work with President's Council has demonstrated that because I've had to listen to a variety of voices and I know that sometimes it's hard when the loudest voices are coming at you and it can be difficult to, to hear those who, who aren't coming forward. And so I think that my ability to listen and to, to keep a broader view and on the bigger picture will add value, could add value to the board.
Thank you so much Shayna. That, those are all the questions we had prepared for you. Really appreciate you coming to interview with us this evening. Thank you so much. Hi, good evening. Thank you. Just stating for the record, we will be interviewing next Suzanne Ryan. Hi Suzanne, how are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. We're going to put 10 minutes up on the board. Think, just looking for thumbs up that we're good. Okay, great. All right Suzanne, if you could start with an opening statement on why you'd want to serve, that would be great.
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. As I was planning my lesson for tomorrow to teach my AP Lang and Com class, the lesson was building rhetorical knowledge using Kairos. And it hit me that the ancient Greek concept of Kairos can be applied to service on our Board of Education as well. Kairos is a time when conditions are right for crucial action, taking advantage of or creating a perfect moment to deliver a particular message. Kairos is seizing the day, responsiveness. Kairos is the notion of situational time, a specific time distinct from calendar or clock time. It refers both to opportune moment for persuasion and to the knowledge of what is appropriate, fitting for a particular occasion. My perfect chaotic moment is now. And I would like to deliver this message. My reason for putting my name forward to serve here, it is all about the children. I believe in children, I always have. I served 25 years in Maplewood-South Orange School District. I'm in my 43rd year teaching. I believe that everything that we do on this Board of Education should be distilled down to the children. Every decision, every deliberation that must be done respectfully, must be with the children in our district in mind. So I am here to pledge that if I am chosen, I will serve the children and serve their families who send them to our schools each day. They deserve the best. I have also said that South Orange-Mapplewood School District can be the shining light or a beacon of hope for the country. We truly can be. Children get one shot at their education, one K through 12 experience, one experience here, K through 12 in SOMSD. It must be the best. They deserve the best curriculum that is proven to work. They deserve the best facilities that are safe and inviting. They deserve the best staff to attend to their needs and guide them through their educational process. College and career training begins in kindergarten. We have no time to waste. We must get the job done. It takes grit, it takes determination, it takes boldness and the ability to look at the issues that are in front of us. So that is what I would bring to this board. So as we address that which needs to be addressed, no matter how difficult it may seem, we must dwell on what needs to be done. We must also dwell in joy, because joy is what we have in our community, joy in our children. Only then can we seize that Kairos moment and transform our district, one child at a time. Before you know it, we're changing the world. And you can say, well, how do I know it? I've been doing it for the last 43 years. I would greatly love to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. What is the biggest challenge facing the district today and how will your service on the board influence how learners face those challenges?
I think the, the greatest challenge we have is our curriculum. I think when I look at, and those that know me, I am a person who believes very strongly in a systematic and explicit way of teaching reading. When I look at our reading scores in this district and I see the children that are not doing well, and we could say a failure rate, I think that that is unconscionable. I think that the curriculum that we use, and I realize that the board does not designate curriculum, but we give that service and we give those ideas and we give that mandate to our administrators, particularly our superintendent. I think we need to do better and I think we need, with all that's out there, to prove how we teach reading, it needs to be done correctly. I believe the teachers need, another issue that's related is professional development. We've got phenomenal teachers. We've got phenomenal teachers. They were my colleagues, wonderful people here, wonderful, wonderful teachers. They need the support, the scaffolding, and the curriculum to do those jobs.
Thank you. I think you touched on this, but is our curriculum and instruction meeting the needs of all our learners? Please explain.
I believe that it is not at this point. I know that there has been an academic achievement gap for years. At one point in 1981, the academic achievement gap between white and black children was at its least, 1981. And then what happened was this movement called Whole Language, which morphed into balanced literacy, and it goes on. It's this moving target. And as soon as that was embraced, the gap has widened. And we have that issue here. I think there's research out there, there's plenty of research that shows that that systematic explicit instruction will get our children where they need to be. And I think that that's crucial at this point, because reading is the essential skill, because you learn to read, but it is reading that allows you then to learn in all other content areas.
Hi Suzanne.
Hi.
What skills and perspectives will you bring to the table that will positively help us advance our goals as a district?
Oh, wow. I've lived here for 39 years. I, I'm a teacher, so I bring the educational. I completed all of my doctoral work in educational leadership and management. All that was completed, so I'm in ABD. So I have that as a wellspring of knowledge that I can bring to it. I've worked in the community as a volunteer. I believe wholeheartedly in making sure that we remain stably diverse. I think that there are ways that we, as a community, need to come together. And I think that my being a volunteer, whether it was a Girl Scout leader, whether it was working in my neighborhood associations, I was a co-chair of the community group called Friends and Neighbors, and I was co-chair of the Social Action Committee, which was the precursor to the Community Coalition on Race. So we were the agitated, agitative group that really pushed our two towns to say, if we don't do something, we lose our diversity. And if we love our diversity, we have to work hard for it. And I think I bring that to the table. I believe wholeheartedly in getting all members of the community together, and I've done that in, in various capacities. I'm a communicator, I communicate well, so I think that would, that would pretty much sum it up.
Okay, those are all the prepared questions we have for you this evening. So, yeah, that was quick. Great. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Suzanne.
Hello, everybody.
I know you're tired. Good evening.
Hi, just for the record, we have, our last interview will be with Ms. Johanna Wright. So thank you so much for joining us. We're gonna put 10 minutes up on the screen and, just looking, okay, great. And so, Ms. Wright, if you could start with an opening statement as to why you want to serve, that would be great.
Okay. My experience and my ability to pick up on things quickly is gonna try, gonna try and serve me well. But the most important thing that I have to bring to this vacancy is being able to hit the ground running. And not only that, the institutional knowledge that I have is vast. It is impossible for me to sum up nine years on this board that I have served on in the three minutes that you have given me. So I like to also say that I'm only three months removed from board service, and I feel obligated to come back and serve. I am eager to help to bring everyone together and collaborate during this busy budget season, where I have experience as a past Finance, Facilities, and Technology Chair. We have the board's goal-setting work, which I am familiar with, that needs to be done as well, and the multiple challenges facing the district over the next eight months. When you bring in an interim, it's best to bring in a person who has a broad range of experiences, because this is not a situation where inexperience is an advantage. Having sat on others, on the other side of this table, viewing and doing the same thing that you're doing right now, I know how difficult it can be. But I also realize it's best to find a candidate that can get up to speed quickly and add value without the need to do a lot of training. I fit that bill, and that is why my name is in the hat.
Hello, thank you, Johanna. What is the biggest challenge facing the district today? And how will your service on the board influence how learners face those challenges?
Wow, that's a great question. If we have a challenge, it's not in the, in, in, what we're doing, it would be in the district goals. So I say that our district goals are our biggest challenges that we have today, and you all know what they are.
Thank you. Is our curriculum and instruction meeting the needs of all learners? Please explain.
We know that our curriculum and instruction is not meeting the needs of most learners. We know that from the data that has been given, we know from the teachers, the instruction in our students. We have a lot of work to do there.
Hi, Mrs. Wright. What skills and perspectives will you bring to the table that will positively help us advance our goals as a district?
I think I explained that in my opening. The things that I bring to the table are vast. My words, my work, my votes are all memorialized in policies online and in news clips for all to see. So other than that, I, I bring 35 years of experience as an educator, close to a decade as a board member, and again, I'm ready to hit the ground running and get things done.
Those are all the remarks that we had prepared, all the questions. So, thank you so much, Ms. Wright, for coming in and interviewing for this position. And that concludes all of our interviews for the evening. So, thank you. Sorry, just moving. So, thank you to all the candidates. We really appreciate your time with us this evening. The board will now adjourn to a closed session for roughly 30 minutes to discuss the candidates that were interviewed, and the board will reconvene and proceed with business where formal action will be taken. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to a closed session for the aforementioned reason. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? The vote appears to be unanimous, so we are now adjourning to closed session.
Yeah, that's really nice.
Yeah, well you're right. Most of them are simple things and then they'll be all. Yeah, but.
It's like saying bread.
Big bread, yeah, all the same. It won't take me that long if I was trying to. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know. Yeah.
I think that's one of the. That's one of the.
To do with. Yeah. In the building.
What? From.
...
Okay, thank you everybody. Thank you for your patience. So now, we will start the process of nominations for the board vacancy. So I'll ask my board colleagues, do I have any nominations for board member?
Board president.
Oh, sorry. Uh, sorry, board member?
Winkfield.
I'm so sorry. It's okay. Board president, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Shayna Sackett-Gabel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other nominations for board member Malaspina?
I nominate Johanna Wright.
Okay, do I have a second for Johanna Wright?
Second.
Okay, do I have any other nominations on the table this evening? Board member Telleisford, Dr. Telleisford?
I'd like to nominate Shannon Cuddell.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so are there any other nominations this evening? Going once, going twice? Okay, nominations are now closed. And so we will be calling roll in the order in which the nominations were made. Thank you, Mr. Burnside.
Could you spill back on the... I don't see him. I just want to make sure we're not voting without him. He's trying to get back on, so if we could give it him a second. Oh, seems like he's...
You there, Bill?
I am here.
Okay, sorry.
This is roll call for the nomination of Shayna Sackett-Gabel. Board member Deval Wilson.
No.
Board member Eckert.
No.
Board member Gifford.
No.
Board member Malaspina.
No.
Board member Telleisford.
Yes.
Board member Vitlamani.
Yes.
Board member Winkfield.
Yes.
Board president with letter.
No.
Motion doesn't pass. This is motion for the nomination of Johanna Wright. Board president with letter.
Yes.
Board member Winkfield.
No.
Board member Vitlamani.
No.
Board member Telleisford.
No.
Board member Malaspina.
Yes.
Board member Gifford.
Yes.
Board member Eckert.
Yes.
Board member Deval Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna hand it over and congratulations to Ms. Wright. I'm gonna... Patrick, could you just explain the process? Thank you.
Right, so the process is that they have to undergo a criminal background check. Typically, that occurs within 30 days of the appointment or election. I know Ms. Wright is a past board member, so for her, there's gonna be an archiving process. It would be as simple as contacting the CHRU and getting the fingerprints approved through the archiving process. But generally speaking, it's the current policy that, and my recommendation, that board appointees not take their seat and start voting until they've gone through that process. So it should be short, and she should be able to start participating very soon. And just so everyone's clear on this as well, the oath does not have to occur in public. Anybody that can administer oaths can give the oath. So that could occur with the business administrator, with myself, or anybody else that can administer an oath. It doesn't have to occur here.
Thank you, Mr. Carrick. So we will now begin our first hearing of individuals and delegates this evening. Thank you for coming in person and dialing in by phone. The South Orange Maplewood Board of Education certainly respects that you've taken the time out of your busy day to address the board at tonight's meeting. We value public involvement in our school district, and we are eager to hear what you have to say. The board does have time limits by policy, and it will be enforcing those to enable as many people to speak as possible this evening. Each individual will be given three minutes to speak. Please do your best to stay within the time afforded to you. The first public comment period is usually limited to one hour, and the second public comment period may be limited to 30 minutes. All input shared with the Board of Education is taken very seriously and will inform future deliberations and work by the Board of Education and its committees. We request that you please state your name and town of residence for the record. So the first person up is a student, Vicki Johnson. Sorry, sorry Vicki. I thought you were a student. I'm sorry.
What was the problem?
Sorry, I said that you were a student, and I apologize for that. Sorry, I said that you were a student, and I apologize for that. I'm sorry, Vicki.
Oh, that's nice.
Sorry about that.
Oh, I feel good already. Sit down. Okay. My name is Vicki Johnson, and I've been a resident of South Orange for 30 years, and I've also been an adjunct professor for 25 years at a community college. I have two children that graduated from Columbia High School, and they both received a positive, caring, and nurturing environment for learning. Now, my granddaughter attends Columbia, and I am very disappointed, disgusted, and shocked at the present school environment and culture. My granddaughter has an IEP and has experienced three separate incidents of psychological trauma since December 2022, including bullying, harassment, psychological threats, physical harm, which has created a hostile environment. She was given marijuana brownies by a fellow student at Columbia and was taken to St. Barnabas Hospital by ambulance to the emergency room for treatment on 12/13/2022. And my daughter was sent two bills, and the district was notified of the bills, and they refused to pay. This is unbelievable, to treat a student and parent with such disrespect. She has presently assigned home instruction since January 2023 because of continual physical threats. She has never received any regular class assignment or textbooks, only worksheets on canvas, without any instruction as an IEP student. The home instructor is not employed by the South Orange Maplewood District and needed textbooks and other educational resources to provide a comprehensive educational plan for students. My daughter and the home instructor have contacted the IEP case manager, the IEP supervisor, and the assistant principal multiple times. And as of today, 3:30, 2023, no structured written educational plan of care, no textbooks have been provided. The home instructor is limited with the level of educational resources she can provide without certain worksheets and textbooks from the district. She has missed, and I'm emphasizing, three months of school. Three months of school. Please tell me, how should we be able to make this up? It's unbelievable. She has, as an IEP student, feels invisible, like no one cares about her at South Orange Maplewood School District. She has been neglected by the Columbia administration, including the assistant principal and the special services IEP staff. The South Orange Maplewood School District provided no communication, no accountability, and takes no responsibility for the educational needs of Sydney as an IEP student. This is unacceptable, insensitive behavior for a school of higher education to perform on this level, especially for IEP students. It is the law.
Vicki, Vicki, thank you so much for coming, and I'm so sorry to cut you short, but your time has lapsed, and we really appreciate you coming forward this evening.
But I would appreciate if, in closing, there is a meeting with the IEP staff, with the assistant principal from Columbia, and also a board member to make sure her needs are being met before I pursue this further. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicki. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. The next person up for public speaks, and I apologize if I pronounce your first name wrong, is Jakob Scheinfeld.
Board of Ed, good evening. Board of Ed, good evening. My dear daughter was a wonderful, caring, creative, artistic child. Her name was Sophia Scheinfeld. We lived here in Maplewood, New Jersey, and South Orange for the past 33 years. Today, she would have been 29 years old. But she committed suicide on August 6, 2021. Sophia was transgender, then was called Sam August. At age 17, Sophia indicated to us that she is in the wrong body and not female. I was shaken, upset, and very, very concerned. The more I read, the more I was concerned. I was, and it was, I'm sorry, 2010. I've asked to meet Columbia principal at the time, Dr. Lili Lavi. I've got no answers to my questions and concerns. Sophia was 100% influenced by peers at her school. Friends, in parentheses, who were activists in the group that probably formed in the high school. We never promoted it in our family. Sophia said to me, "Don't you want me to be happy?" She said to me. I objected fiercely. Two years went by with her not talking to me. It's very hard. It was very hard. Now Sam August went to college. She removed her breast in a hospital and took a list of hundreds of medications that I have here. But we don't have time. I only have three minutes. Her appearance changed. Her facial changed, the voice changed, and her demeanor changed. Sam was not happier, just actually sad and withdrawal. I'm not saying she was never happy, and she may have thought that she did the right thing for herself. I don't know. The loss of Sophia to Sam was very painful to me as a son, to both parents, who were Holocaust survivors. As Hungarian Jews, Sam took their life alone in a hotel room on August 6, 2021. Why am I here? I had no idea then and now that the school district of South Orange and Maplewood has almost like a transgender task force. And I read your, almost seven pages of the protection and the needs that they need. I find it dangerous. I find it morbid. And I sincerely, and I think that it is scientifically unproven agenda. And I know quite a bit of where it started. I'm not going to get into it. But I'm asking you, the board members, I'm asking you, why is such a deology and cult-like phenomenon exist?
The time limit, the time has lapsed. Each individual person gets three minutes and...
I have four more sentences, please. I waited three hours to be here. Okay, just give me three more seconds, okay? Please.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I am appalled by the focus this body, this body, gives to gender issues that do not belong in these walls of learning. I come from a place where learning was math, geography, and so on. I don't understand it. And just a few days ago, a person of the same killed six people. And there are four more.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And there are four more.
Thank you, Jakob. We really appreciate you coming.
Now, I would like, okay, I would like to know.
Your time is up, sir. Please.
I know, I know, but I'd like to know.
I'm sorry, but we can only afford...
But I want to know, where do I take it further? Because I want you, I want you to listen to me before it happens to...
Yeah, I just want to explain that the board, we can't have direct dialogue back and forth with members of the community, but please feel free to email the board or email administration with any questions. So thank you so much, Jakob. We really do appreciate you coming this evening. Up next, we have Joshua Einjart.
Do I get a timer? I'll do my best to stay on track. Okay. Good evening. My name is Joshua Einjart, and I've been ELA teacher at CHS for 15 years. Since 2013, I've been the only journalism teacher, sometimes leading five full sections that were past capacity with more than 30 kids in a class. For eight of those years, I was also the content advisor to the school's student newspaper, The Columbian. From 2014 to 2020, a consecutive six-year streak, the newspaper was awarded first place in the country by this Classic Press Association, a national organization that assesses thousands of newspapers from across the country. Since it started in 1915, The Columbian has earned significant local and national accolades, including recognition from the Essex County Board of Chosen Freeholders, Columbia University, and even the National Media Group, NBC. The paper was staffed by writers and editors who took the journalism course. Former grads who took the course and/or were on the editorial board often went on to pursue the field in higher academia as well as professionally. American University, Temple, Queens, UMD, Syracuse, UPenn, and Columbia are just some of the campuses that supported the continued study of journalism for many former CHS kids. For example, Hadrona Lowenkrone and Sarah Baraka, both class of 2018, even went on to become editors-in-chief as seniors at UPenn and Columbia respectively. Some of them has also worked at our local media outlets like The Village Green. All of them started that journey with the journalism course at CHS. In October of 2022, current ELA supervisor Jane Bean-Folks unilaterally dismantled the course for next year, leaving it as only a senior-only, half-year course that awards the students no ELA graduation credit. This was done without any input or discussion from the only journalism teacher. In fact, it wasn't even given the courtesy of any notice as the first mention of these changes came to me two months after she had made the decision. She cited an untruth that UC schools did not recognize the course as applicable credit for admission. When I provided her with an email from the Associate Director of Admissions from UC Santa Barbara explicitly stating that this just wasn't true, she dismissed it, told me to be quiet, and repeatedly said that the ship had sailed. This took place at a recent department meeting in front of a number of my colleagues. If indeed the ship has sailed, the established and fully functioning curriculum will need to be completely rewritten. This will cost time and money, valuable resources the district is already short on. I urge all of you here tonight, the community, the board, the superintendent, to ask yourselves if this is just. I ask you to consider looking at this matter on your own to see if this decision can be undone. I ask you to consider the future of the decorated, century-old student newspaper that has always been supported by the journalism course. Will The Columbian be able to survive? I ask you to consider the future, I ask you to consider the upcoming students' experiences navigating one of the district's most important and flagship departments. Will there be any more future Hadrona Lowenkrones or Sarah Barakas who can represent the best of us and who we are at institutions like UPenn and Columbia? Will we be able to support local journalism like we have, like we have been in the past, if this change is not undone? Are the ideals and values we pride ourselves on having actually being represented in the current departmental leadership through decisions like this? Or does the community deserve better? I think they, I think we all deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Josh. So that concludes the in-person public speaks. So we'll move on now to our audio public speaks. And the first individual who registered is Eileen Pazuro.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Just one second. I am speaking. I'm just trying to find my email. One second. Okay. I'm speaking about a resolution which I believe the board is voting on tonight. It's Resolution 4431F. And my understanding is that this resolution states that the district will cover legal fees for board member Alisa Malaspina at $250 an hour. As I understand it, Malaspina acted against the advice of taxpayer-funded district council and did not recuse herself from voting on the transportation settlement. Her insurance company then denied her claim after an ethics complaint was filed against her for failing to recuse herself, and she is now asking the district to foot her bill when she acted against the district attorney's advice. Ms. Malaspina confirmed that she was conflicted herself during the July 18, 2022 Board of Education meeting when she stated, "I'm conflicted moving forward with busing or intentional integration, so I will not be commenting, I cannot comment, or do not vote on anything related to it, just that the public should understand." Obviously, there's a conflict of interest here, and conflicts of interest are particularly concerning in terms of ignoring counsel. It isn't merely that she's ignoring the best advice or she's willing to take that risk. It's a declaration of choosing one's own interests over that of the board. And it seems that the insurance company believes that took her actions outside of her capacity as a board member. I believe the risk she took was to us all. As, as for whether this vote was part of the settlement or not, going against counsel was reckless. You can't risk, you can't, you can take that risk yourself, but don't expect to take that for all of us. The district paid for that lawyer, and we don't have to pay for another. I ask that the board members consider this conflict of interest and board members Malaspina's poor judgment in ignoring that legal advice. The district should not have to pay for legal counsel to advise or defend her after she publicly stated she knew that she needed to recuse herself and then did not, against the advice of legal counsel that the district had already paid for. That is entirely ridiculous and inappropriate. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I hope that you will consider this when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. The next audio public speaks is Ronnie Schwartz.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, are you able to hear me?
Ronnie, we can't hear you well.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better. But if you could be louder, that would be helpful, but we can still hear you better than before.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds good.
Thank you. I'm here to say that Resolution 4431F is a terrible use of taxpayer funds. The district taxpayers already paid for legal advice, and though board member Malaspina may be entitled to indemnification by the board, paying for it twice because she didn't act in the best interest of the board the first time is beyond belief. We are in a budget crisis. We cannot pay our teachers and staff enough in comparison to neighboring districts. The roof needs to be replaced at MMS. Teachers at Columbia High School had Amazon wish lists to buy books this week. We are failing to provide required services to children with special needs. Our children are suffering a mental health crisis and need more social work resources. We have an inexcusable achievement gap. And the Board of Ed and the Board of School estimate are considering an unconscionable tax increase to pay for transportation for students who are not legally entitled to it. And while I would support a subscription-based transportation service with fees covered for children who qualify for free and reduced lunch, I do not support paying thousands of dollars per child for transportation that is not required while we have all of these other deficits. So although the Board of Education may be required to pay for these legal fees, the community should take note that it is a horrible, irresponsible use of resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie, and that concludes our audio... Oh, sorry, we have one more. That, he just spoke. Yeah, okay. No, thank you. So, oh, so Dr. Taylor, did you want to respond to anything?
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening again to everyone. And thank you for those who took time out of your evening to share your concerns with us during public speaks. Our team and I, we take copious notes and also try to offer responses when appropriate after public speaks. Is Vicki still here? Did she leave? Okay, we'll be sure to follow up with that circumstance. I wanted to interject, just to not share so much information when identifying her grandchild because that could threaten her... because that could threaten her confidentiality, so we may modify what's on our YouTube page for that, just to protect that student's confidentiality. Regarding the journalism course and the shift in curriculum, I know that that concern was raised to Ms. Bodnar, our Assistant Sue before CNI, and she has been reviewing that matter, and we can give the CNI Committee an update on that with, you know, a more detailed review. Regarding the gentleman who spoke about the passing of his daughter and his objection to our LGBTQ support, I must say that I disagree vehemently, and that's been demonstrated through our commitment to support all of our students, in particular, our most underrepresented students, and that is of record that I'm very proud of as a superintendent. And so, while everyone has a right to free speech, I also have a right to disagree with that speech. Those are all of my responses.
Thank you so much, Dr. Taylor. Now we'll transition to the action portion of the meeting, so Dr. Taylor, the mic is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just verifying the resolutions that we expect to be severed this evening. From my notes, those resolutions are 4434, sorry, 4434, 4437, 4439, and 4. We have also two hand carries that will come after the formal vote. Did I miss any of the severed resolutions?
Board Member Badlamani.
I was looking at the policies that were put up for second reads, and some of them seem to have disappeared off the site between last night I saw it and this time I saw it. Like, for example, 7440 was set up for second reads, and it's not there anymore. And so, I guess my question is, how do you want to, I'm willing to take this, you know, make it easy and kind of figure it out. There are a bunch of things that are not ready for 442, for the second reads, like 3321, there's no redlining. Your promised redlining is there for many of them, so how do I go about making sure they're pulled out so I can vote no on the second reads?
Do you want to sever any of the?
So I guess I have.
I don't see, on the second reading, an adoption. I don't see policies.
3321?
No, you said 7740, right?
Well, 7440 is gone.
And it's not on the list of?
Yes, I understand.
Okay, so I don't, I don't think we're voting on that this, today.
3321?
3321 is on there, so you want to sever 4436E for conversation?
Yes, and 5460.
5460 is not on.
It's not on, well, that's, okay. I don't know how, they were all there last night. I went through each one.
Board Member?
Anyway, maybe.
Board Member Winfield, sorry.
Have any been withdrawn? Have any of these, have they been put on the website and then pulled back?
Not that I'm aware of. If you look at the?
5512?
Revisions?
Okay, I mean, I believe you.
Sure. Every time, every time we have an update, the board has given that update, and what is changed is noted on the update. I don't have a way of verifying what was taken down, but I would also agree that everything that's here is what you are voting on this evening. Whatever was there previously, I would disregard at this time.
So, sorry, Board Member Winfield, just really quickly, I just wanted to confirm. So you would like to sever 4436E, which is policy 3321? 3321, the, okay. Dr. Taylor, okay. So Board Member Winfield.
I'd like to sever 4431F.
Okay, we will sever 4431F.
I will repeat again, Board Members, thank you. On my list to sever are 4431F, 4434, 4436E, 4437, 4439. Any others? Madam President, seeing none, I would present to the board for consideration Resolutions 4428 through 4439, noticing the exceptions of those that have been severed.
Second. Okay, I guess someone else has?
We're in discussion.
Okay, so we're in discussion for 4428 through 4439, with the exception of the severed resolutions. Does anyone have any thing to say about? Oh, Board Member Eckert, and then Board Member Badlamani.
Yes, so I had a question, or just a clarification on 4438, which is the school calendar for the 2324 school year. You know I was gonna ask you about that, right? Yep. I just want to confirm I'm reading this correctly. So for next school year, the last day is now June 20th. I believe that's a Thursday.
That's correct.
That is a Thursday. Wonderful. I just want to say thank you, Dr. Taylor, for listening to the concerns brought up by many people in this community, parents, teachers, some fellow board members, in changing the last day of school. You know, while this school year is not up, I would encourage you to continue to evaluate if Monday, June 26, is still necessary as the last day of school for the current school year. We've not used snow days. I know that right now that the Friday before Memorial Day weekend is a give-back day. While I do respect that, I'm sure many families have plans then, it would be interesting, I would be curious to see if maybe we survey and they would actually rather have that day as a school day and Monday, the 26, as not the last day of school.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, though.
Thank you, duly noted. And one thing that we share with families who have reached out to us with that concern was first, of course, acknowledging that concern, but also helping folks to understand the amount of planning that goes into some of the events that are planned for that Monday, some of the, you know, long-reaching reserves of materials and things that are used for some of the culminating activities that are already planned for that day. And we certainly understand and acknowledge the challenge that some folks are having with their family obligations. And we, I think that our reflection on this upcoming calendar reflects that. And for those who don't know, when we create our calendars, we bounce them off of several different stakeholder groups, including our PTAs and HSAs, our partners at SOMEA, our partners in ASCA, and of course, our Board of Education gives us feedback as well. And so, we're definitely always open to improving. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments specifically about Resolution 4438 before we go to another resolution that we're voting on? No? Okay. Board Member Badlamani, and then Board Member Malaspina.
Actually, I had an identical question, so she, and he answered it, so.
Okay, Board Member Malaspina.
I just want to clarify for everybody that the policies that were pulled, those four, the 7440, which you were asking about, Board Member Badlamani, was pulled, and so was 8420 and 2260 from, after first read, we pulled them, and they're going back to first read. So they were not on this agenda, so, just so you know.
No, I understand, but they were there last night, so, you know.
I can also help.
I'm assuming that, you know, there's going to be some sanctity of, you know, keeping things constant as opposed to changing at the last minute, which is, I'm glad you pulled it out, because they were obviously on my list of things that I would want to revisit again, but it would be nice if there was some kind of an, well, I don't know, maybe there's an update. I'll look for your email and confirm that it says that these have been pulled out, hopefully.
Thank you. And also for 3321, that was a new Strauss ESMA policy, so there's never been one before. So there's no redline because it didn't exist before.
Sorry, hang on. So is that, what are you saying, is it's a brand-new policy?
3321?
Never existed before?
Yes, it's a new policy from Strauss ESMA.
Then there's no need to sever it. That's fine.
Exactly. And the other, the other two were pulled because of need for more discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Just to clarify one more time, I mean, there is no need to sever 4436E. Thanks.
So we're in the middle of discussing the previous motion, so it'll probably be easier for us to keep it severed, then we can just move forward. Thank you.
Do any Board Members have any additional questions or comments regarding 4428, Resolution 4428 through 4439, with the exception of the resolutions were severed? Okay. Not seeing any other questions, let's close discussion and take roll call. Thank you.
Board Member Deval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Badlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Winfield?
Yes.
Board President Weller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Board Members. The next resolution for consideration is 4431F. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay, now we are open for discussion on Resolution 4431F. Board Member Winfield.
Yeah, I think the question is directed at Mr. Carrick. Can you explain to us, because on the resolution at the bottom, it says that the reason for the request for the attorney fees to be paid is that the Insurance Council, which normally covers board members, rejected this claim. Can you speak to why that rejection occurred? Have you heard directly from the Insurance Council, or?
Yes, so whenever a claim comes in, you submit it to your insurance company. Your insurance company then does a coverage position, and the insurance company in this case did a coverage position letter that was issued to the district on March 14th, and the reason for their disclaimer is they have a policy exclusion under both their coverages, Coverages A and B. The disclaimer says, "A claim shall not include any action arising out of," and number two is, "a complaint or filing with the School Ethics Commission." So this policy that was, where the claim was submitted, they sent back saying they have a specific policy exclusion, and so that is why they are not covering it.
Can I just ask a follow-up real quick? I guess my follow-up is that we've had Board Members file ethic charges against other Board Members in the past, and those claims have been covered by Insurance Council, so I'm curious if you can explain why this one was not?
So this one is related to the policy that they interpreted. I did, in the timeframe we were in exact up until now, ask for the policy coverage letter that was sent last March, and that was also a denial for the same reason. I'm reading from it right now. This is a letter dated March 17, 2022, and it also is a denial of coverage.
Denial of coverage for whom?
Yeah, in summary, for the reasons discussed above, the policy does not provide coverage for the claims made against the insured. In this one, the insureds were Mr. Joshua, Ms. Winfield, Ms. Siders, Ms. Cuddle, Mr. Saban, Ms. Bergen, and Ms. Maney.
So how is that inconsistent with the coverage that we've received?
So I don't know how you've received coverage, because this is a denial letter. So I, and I wasn't the board attorney in 2022, and so I don't know, other than I see a disclaimer of coverage here.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, before I take any questions, I just wanted to ask our attorney to walk through Board Member indemnification and our bylaw, which I think I have up here, which is Bylaw 0148. If you could just walk through that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So your bylaw mirrors a statute, okay? The statute is NJSA 18A12-20, which essentially provides for indemnification of board members that are sued, whether that be in a civil claim or an administrative claim, which is what a school ethics action is, when the conduct at issue arises out of the performance of their duties as a board member. And so, in looking at this particular case, the issue came down to a vote, and a vote, generally speaking, is a duty of a board member. And so for that reason, the coverage position that we gave was a recommendation for coverage. The School Ethics Act interpreting case law does not require that the board member win a case, it's just that whether or not it was an act in the course of the performance of their duties. And it's a mandatory statute, it uses the word "shall," which is mandatory language, meaning that it must happen. And so, that is why this recommendation was put out there. We've looked at the complaint itself, it relates to a vote, that is something that Board Members do, and so we believe that the statute does apply, and in that respect, then the board would be obligated to indemnify the board member. The board does this in many other facets. There are similar statutes that apply to teaching staff members and administrative staff members, so even when, in those circumstances, coverage might not apply, they have similar language that says if the act arises out of the performance of their duties, then in those circumstances, the board is required to indemnify. So this is a similar circumstance. I mean, just to read some case law real quick, the statute protects both successful and unsuccessful litigants, so again, it doesn't require you to win at the end to be covered. That's the general reason why.
Thank you very much. Board Member Badlamani?
Is the price in line with all the other lawyers that we take care, I mean, we pay for?
So the price is in line for what a private attorney would cost to handle a school ethics matter. So insurance gets lower rates because they give volume to their panel of attorneys, and so they get a discount for that. Most private attorneys in New Jersey probably charge in the neighborhood of $350 plus for private counsel. Public entities generally pay a little bit less, and so at $250 an hour, that seems pretty reasonable.
Dr. Telesford?
I guess I'll just say that I feel as if we're paying twice because we, much more of a comment, we pay for legal advice, and then now we're paying for extra legal, I guess, defense, and that's also going to be higher than what we actually pay for our own counsel. And so, I think that is just a disservice to the taxpayers.
Board Member Winfield, and this will be your?
Yep. So, Mr. Carrick, that's definitely news to me, because Insurance Council has been paying for my defense for the last 18 months. So I assume that if that's an error, that we'll be prepared to foot the bill for my legal expenses as well. But I also want to be clear, while Board Member Malaspina is giggling over there, I just want to remind that she's the reason why those costs have been incurred by the district for filing those charges. And, you know, most of you on this dais ran on some version of a platform of putting students first, and I fail to see in any way, shape, or form how allocating these resources at a time where our district is so desperately in need of focusing every single penny where it is most needed, and that's with students, that we think that this is a good use of resources, in particular, when one of our members directly ignored the advice of counsel and put our entire board at risk as a result of that action.
So I just, again, the financial consequence of not complying with Bylaw 0148 would far outweigh the financial cost of what we're discussing here, and as discussed, the Board of Education shall indemnify board members in accordance with law when they are functioning and acting in the course of their performance of their duties as a board member. And I think we have to comply with our bylaws, and there is a lot And there is a lot of information that cannot be shared here. But we do have several lawyers, all of whom weighed into this particular situation. And there were varying opinions. So, I would just like to say that as a board member, you are able to manage your own recusals. And in acting as a board member, if you choose to vote, that is within your right. You're an elected official to do so. So, if there's no other comments outside of the concerns around the finances with this particular resolution, I think we should look to close discussion. And this will be Board Member Vadlamani and Board Dr. Telesford. And then, we should probably go to vote.
So, Board President, what you just said was pure speculation. I mean, there is no way for you to know what would cost more or less. Right now, the only thing we have in front of us is the cost of the lawyers. You're speculating what would happen if somebody sued us and the cost of... That's pure speculation. So, let's not go after that, right? Second thing is, you did mention that, you know, we got advice from lawyers who seem to agree with what you're saying. But clearly, that was not the case before. I mean, I know we can't talk a lot about what happened in private, but that's not consistent. And that needs to be part of the record. And, you know, maybe if, maybe Board Member Malaspina can explain some more. I mean, maybe she has a right to explain.
This isn't, we're not allowed to... Do you have anything else to add? Because we'll go to Dr. Telesford.
Did I finish? I haven't finished yet.
Okay, so...
So, I just wanted on the record that we've had multiple lawyers over the last three years and who have given different advice. And it's in our best interest to follow the advice of the lawyer who we have, not the one we wish we had, or not the one who comes in future. That's what I want to leave on the record.
Dr. Telesford?
I just wanted to echo that. We can talk to many lawyers. We can talk to Saul Goodman if we want to. But we have one board counsel, and that's who we should be listening to, is our board counsel. And not saying, "Well, many people said this." That's a very wishy-washy statement. We have one board counsel, and we should listen to whatever their clear advice is. That's all I'll say.
Thank you so much. And so, I will defer to our board counsel, who's giving us advice. And one thing I did would like Mr. Carrick to clarify. In your opinion, I don't know if you can give it, but is it fiscally responsible to indemnify, to comply with Bylaw 0148?
Yes, I believe so. You will be exposed to a claim, then, for failing to indemnify, which would have its own costs associated with it based on the person bringing that claim and then the person that you hire to defend that claim.
Okay, Board Member Wingfield?
Are you saying that the risk would be that Board Member Malaspina would sue the district for costs incurred as a result of this? That that's what's at risk?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Right, which is, just so I'm clear, that's a permissible thing. That is not a disqualifying action. There are a number of cases over the years where that has occurred, because a board has refused to indemnify. And the commissioner then makes a decision as to whether indemnification is appropriate under statute or not.
This is the last...
So, you do agree that there have been cases before where board members have not been indemnified? Clearly, you just mentioned that.
Hundred percent, absolutely. But not in a circumstance like this, in my opinion.
That's the advice you're giving us. But you do, there are many, many cases when that happens.
Not many, many cases. There are some cases where the commissioner has found 18A12-20 did not require indemnification. But it's...
Do we have a count of how many there are?
Here's what I would say. So, this is how the commissioners phrased it. "The purpose of the statute is to make manifest the implied power of Boards of Education to provide for the legal defense of a member of the board who is sued individually for some action taken by him or her in furtherance of his prescribed duties." This, combined with the liberal approach to be taken in applying the statute, causes, in this case, to us to concur that the board member was entitled to reimbursement. It's a liberally applied statute.
Okay, well, close the discussion on Resolution 4431F. Mr. Burnside, if you could take the roll. Thank you so much.
Board President Whitletter?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
No.
Board Member Vadlamani?
No.
Board Member Telesford?
No.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Deval Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
To say I recuse myself? I figure...
Thank you. Board members, the next severed item is 4434. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay, yep. We are now opening discussion for Resolution 4434. Board Member Malaspina?
I'm just trying to understand the process. Is there a way to approve all but one? Or do we have to just not approve it all?
The way your motions are written, it's all or nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on 4434? Closing discussion, we will move to a vote. Mr. Burnside?
Board Member Deval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
No.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board President Whitletter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board members, the next severed resolution is 4437. Do I have a second?
Second. We are now open discussion for Resolution 4437. We can't speak about it, because this is a confidential matter. So, with that, we will close discussion and move to the roll.
Board President Whitletter?
Okay, so, yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Deval Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 4439. Do I have a second?
Second. We're now open for discussion on Resolution 4439. Any questions or comments? Or shall we move to voting? Mr. Burnside, we're going to close discussion. If you could take the roll, thank you.
Board Member Deval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board President Whitletter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, there was a request to sever 4436E. And so, it's easier for us to vote it now instead of taking it back. So, 4436E, do I have a second?
Second. Okay, we're now open for discussion on Resolution 4436E. Seeing no questions or comments, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Burnside?
Board President Whitletter?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Deval Wilson? Motion passes.
Board members, we have two hand carries that are coming around now. Board members, you should be familiar with this topic. We'll put forward a resolution now for 4440A and B. Do I have a second?
Second. We're now open for discussion on Resolutions 440A and 440B. Any board member questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close discussion on these resolutions and put it to a vote. Please, Mr. Burnside.
Board Member Deval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board President Whitletter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board members, for your patience. Your last hand carry is 4441, coming around now. Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Board members, you should again be familiar with this resolution. I present to you 4441. Do I have a second?
Second. We're now open discussion for Resolution 4441. Seeing no questions or comments, we will close discussion. Mr. Burnside, can you please call the roll on Resolution 441?
Board President Whitletter?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Deval Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
To our board president, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. We will now begin our second hearing of individuals and delegates this evening. I'd like to begin by thanking you for coming in person and dialing in by phone. The South Orange Maplewood Board of Education certainly respects that you've taken the time out of your busy day to address the board at tonight's meeting. We value public involvement in our school district, and we are eager to hear what you have to say. The board does have time limits by policy, and it will be enforcing those to enable as many people to speak as possible this evening. Each individual will be given three minutes to speak. Please do your best to stay within the time afforded to you. The first public comment period is usually limited to one hour, and the second public comment period may be limited to 30 minutes. All input shared with the Board of Education is taken very seriously and will inform future deliberations and work by the Board of Education and its committees. We request that you please state your name and town of residence for the record.
We have one. Shannon Cuddle?
Okay. Shannon Cuddle?
Hi, good evening again. I also just want to thank you for your time during the interview process and also thank the other folks that came out tonight. It's public service. And congratulate Ms. Wright on another round. What I do just want to take a moment to say pause. We know that our school district and our community has always been an inclusive, diverse, and welcoming space. And we have made that value commitment as a community and as a school district boldly, because we know that it matters. We know that when we do that, it saves lives, it changes lives. And our commitment that we made as a board, the commitment that we make to each other and our communities are interconnected to how we support our most underserved and underrepresented students that are struggling across our community, whether it be food hunger or whether it be students that are struggling with academic success, whether it be students that are struggling with home and life balance, whether it be supporting students that are homeless, whether it be supporting lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, LGBTQ+ youth, and non-binary youth. We have made a strong commitment. And I want to thank you for that and thank our two towns and community and even you as board members and our superintendent, Dr. Taylor. I'm very proud that we are a beacon for other school districts across this state that they have known to go to, to get support, to support all students and families. And our unwavering commitment to that is vitally important, that we stand tall, especially now with all the anti-LGBT rhetoric that we're hearing across the country right now. Our youth are hearing it. Our families are hearing it. Our teachers or staff are hearing it, online and offline. And now, more than ever, we need strong boards of education like yourself, individuals, allies in administration, teachers and staff that are standing up for youth, LGBTQ+ youth, and all youth right now that are under attack. I want to thank us for doing that and continue to be models and also be able to highlight the fact that when we do this work, we do it collectively together. And doing these things collectively together make us stronger, make our students stronger, and make our community able to be such a model that it is to be able to welcome the diversity of our greater communities into the fold. And that is strong and important. And with that being said, I think it's important also to mention that tomorrow, on March 31st, is the International Transgender Day of Visibility. It's held every year. And our students will be taking and participating tomorrow as well in a national walkout that's happening across the country and also in states across the country. You're going to be seeing folks speaking out. I would encourage you all, International Transgender Day of Visibility, TDOV is the acronym, is a day of hope, celebration of our transgender and non-binary students and families, hope for the future, and understanding our history. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, we don't have any additional audio speaks. So, that concludes our public speaks for the evening. And thank you to everyone who came this evening to address the board and, again, to all of our candidates who interviewed this evening. So, now, we will move on to new business. And wanted to see if there are any items up for new business. Just a reminder that new business is a time when board members can bring forth topics that are of such urgency that they must be dealt with in that meeting. And that new business topic brought before the board should be in the form of a motion to take action. So, Dr. Telesford?
I guess I just wanted to... I guess I just wanted to point out that I'm still confused by what we're doing on policy, because we had this whole process of how we were going to have redlining. That process was going to be changing. And I have gotten no clarification from, I guess, what we've released in the media, and then also within our policy committee. And I was hoping that we could actually have the discussion today, but we didn't have committee readouts today.
And, Dr. Telleisford, are you looking to take action this evening?
I guess, I guess I'll make a motion that we continue redlining in our policies.
Do I have a second? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Board Member Wingfield. So now it's open, I guess, for discussion.
Good night. I'll read the part of the readout that was added to the agenda, and I think is now included on the website. So it talks a little about that. Give me one second. Let me pull it up for us. But it does talk about, I was in the policy committee, like you were, and we discussed redlining and the desire to continue the process. We were waiting to hear back from the administration about, they were looking at different technology softwares and all of that, and we were waiting to get a report back from them. But no, we have all made a commitment, and it is included in the policy committee readout, to continue some form of redlining. So I don't, I don't want to be put into a position where we are voting on a resolution where it's not fully written out, because we're not exactly sure how we are going to redline yet, because we haven't heard back from the administration. But we, there is a commitment on the board in the policy committee to keep some form of redlining in there. And so...
Okay, Dr. Taylor, do you have anything to add, please?
Sure. So we checked in with our policy chair and informed him that we had, that the policy team, the internal district team, had done some experimentation with multiple digital options, and we weren't satisfied with the outcome. And just to be as plain English as possible, when we were using those digital pieces that were designed to do that for you, big chunks were missing in the output. And so we're looking at other options, working with our IT director, Mr. Bonds, and the policy team. And we expect to have an update for our chair right after spring break to see if we can find a digital answer for this question.
Okay, so, Board Member Deval Wilson?
Motion to table this discussion. I don't think we're ready to have it, and I don't feel comfortable with a board voting on something when the district is still evaluating and needs to provide a solution. So I motion to table this. Thank you.
That motion?
So a motion to table is like, is an interruption motion. It takes precedence. So now the motion to table, it goes to discussion and vote.
So we vote to table? Okay. So we'll move, does anyone have any? Okay, Board Member Vadlamani, and then Dr. Telleisford?
No, I find it amazing that, I wasn't going to participate in this discussion at all because you convinced, you assured me that, you know, redlining was going to happen. But now that you want to table this, it just seems wrong. You're tabling it because you don't want to discuss it. That's just, no, 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 no. We didn't finish discussing the previous one before. So if you had, all you had to do was wait five minutes and not try to table it, and kill it because, well, you have the five words to kill it, that's exactly how you sound. So if you, if you can maybe take it back, we'll finish discussing it, and then we can come up to a reasonable, you know, conclusion to that.
Dr. Telleisford?
I was just going to say that I was, well, am I allowed to talk about this motion? Or are we going, or can we talk about tabling? Because in the readout, you said that there's going to be some form of redlining. The main issue was that the digital processes did not work well, and the direction and the attitude was, well, then we'll just not do redlining. There was not this commitment to redlining. It was, we'll do a digital form, or we're going to abandon the process. And since the digital form did not work well, you did not want to do it. And so I think it is very important that the community understand why, that we stick with redlining, and that this, some form of redlining, maybe some things are missed, and the attitude was, well, that's going to be up to the community to figure out. And that's what I'm calling attention to.
Okay. I also would just like to have Dr. Taylor kind of step in here, because I do recognize that the motion on the floor, the original motion, was brought to the table by a member of the policy committee, and this seems like an ongoing conversation happening in policy, and, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to speak for our chair, but I can share just the ongoing conversations that we've had around, we've had Strauss Esme, our policy vendor, who's also, of course, a well-respected law firm, come to our policy committees to talk about, you know, their processes and the unintended outcomes and consequences of making significant changes to the policies that they provide for us. And we also spoke about the, just the really significant effort that's needed to go through and do such detailed redlining. And I think that that's where we ended up with our responsibility as administration to share with the policy committee at their next meeting what, if any, digital answers we could find for this that we thought would be suitable. And that's kind of where we are now. I think that, from my recollection, there was definitely a commitment to provide to the board the previous policy and the proposed policy. And the question now is, what assurance can we give to the board regarding the previous work done on those policies? And that's the question that we're trying to solve.
Board Member, Mr. Carrick, sorry.
So actually, I'm looking at the Roberts rules. A motion to table is not debatable. So it's called for an immediate vote.
Okay. So motion to table, Mr. Burnside?
Board Member Deval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Ackert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
I think he's lost.
We lost him.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board Member Telleisford?
No.
Board Member Vadlamani?
No.
Board Member Wingfield?
No.
Board President Whitletter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any additional new business for this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm now going to close new business. With that, I'd like to make the following motion. The Board of Education will meet in public session on Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the District Meeting Room, 525 Academy Street, Maple, New Jersey. Immediately following the opening of public session, the board will move to go into closed session in the superintendent's office at 525 Academy Street in Maple, New Jersey, as well as using an online video conference platform to discuss personnel, matters within the attorney-client privilege, legal negotiations, and other matters that may arise and require discussion to be announced at a later date. Immediately following the closed session, the Board of Education will meet in public session, estimated to be 7:30 PM in the District Meeting Room, 525 Academy Street, Maple, New Jersey, in person, utilizing an online video conference platform, which will include hearing of individuals. The community can view the meeting by following the steps which will be listed on the agenda. And if there are members of the community who would like to attend the meeting in person, please note that masks and social distancing are optional in accordance with the guidance received from the local DOH and the CDC. Action will be taken. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? That appears to be unanimous. So, Mr. Burnside, I would now like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting on Thursday, March 30th, at 11:50 PM. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your evening.